Because they don't know the other 90%. So, the law allows it, and if you do do it in open session, you have to be very careful that you don't disclose information which could get you sued for either invasion of privacy or disclosure of confidential information. Does that answer your question?
It does, except can you make the decisions in closed session on a personnel issue?
Yes. So, a couple more things about the Public Records Act. The Public Records Act is contemplating the disclosure of things that exist. These are documents, you know, eight and a half by eleven documents or electronic information that includes electronic records as well, that you already have. It does not require you or your staff to generate things that don't exist. The compilation of lists is a big issue. There are a bunch of outfits in California, Transparent California is one of them, that are asking every school district in the state to produce all these lists of every employee name and how much they made and where they're assigned. To the extent you have those records, you have to disclose them, but you don't have to generate a special Excel spreadsheet sheet for that now, right? Also, the Public Records Act is a records act. It is not a civil discovery statute. It does not require your staff to answer questions about why you may have done something. It just requires you to give information. You may want to answer questions about why anyway for a different reason, but the Public Records Act doesn't require it. So, we kind of segwayed into this piece, I would say, already, what is a closed session? Some of the most common exceptions under the Brown Act include personnel matters, collective bargaining, anything that's related to students where the disclosure of the information would violate federal or state law on the privacy of student records. That also applies to special education students in particular because there's a body of federal law that makes special education information highly confidential. This is where you're, anything that would identify the particular student, you can do in closed session for that conversation. Pending litigation, anticipated litigation, threatened litigation, you can meet with your attorney in closed session to talk about all of that. Review of audit reports from Bureau of State Audits, you know, other examples that probably don't apply to you, there's a long list, but those are the most common for schools. When you're doing a closed session description, remember, you still have to tell the public what you're talking about. They still get to know the subject, right? They just don't get to watch you do it. And, so you have to list on the closed session section of your agenda, the topics that you will talk about in closed session. Practice tip, the Brown Act has safe harbor language in it, where if you use those agenda descriptions for closed session, it is a legal safe harbor, you cannot be challenged on how you described it. So those are all, I gave those to you a couple months ago in our Brown Act workbook that you guys have, but you can also pull them right out of the government code. What are the requirements? As I said, you have to describe what it is you're going to do. There's usually a prescribed format for that, you follow the safe harbor, and then if you take action, you report it out, which is what we're going to talk about here. Reporting out means that you come out of closed session, which usually is back there, you come back out into the open session of the board, and then you publicly announce the action you've taken. And one of the requirements that was changed last year was, you basically now will be doing everything by local code, because when you announce it out, you're supposed to announce how each member of the board voted. So it used to be you could just report out, "The board voted three to two X." You have to say, "Now, the board voted as follows," or "Three to two with members A, B, and C, yes, and members X and Y, no," right? You're supposed to say how each member voted, that's a requirement. No legal obligation to take or keep minutes for closed session. Who may attend? This again is left up to you, the discretion of the Government Board. The general requirement is you're only supposed to have people in closed session that are necessary for the discussion at issue. The point is to protect the privacy interests or the confidentiality of the information, right? So if you have a bunch of people who don't need to know that, and you're allowed in closed session, you're not protected. But, closed sessions do not have to be limited to only the board, you can have staff in as needed for the particular topic that you're talking about. Are they confidential? Yes. This is something that gets asked about quite a bit, right? So, here's an example of a dividing line. Just because it was talked about in closed session doesn't mean that you can't acknowledge the fact that it was talked about in closed session. You can't. What board members are not supposed to do is come out of closed session and say, "Well, during closed session, Mr. so-and-so said," or, you know, you're not supposed to report out the individual conversations where work was done. But it's okay to say, "Well, that was addressed in closed session, and we approved it in closed session." It's okay to disclose the topic if you're talking to a constituent, but you're not supposed to report out the individual conversations. Some of the possible consequences for that, the Brown Act specifies that you can actually face grand jury investigation for that. The board can obtain an injunction against the person who is leaking information from closed session. Injunction may or may not come with liability for attorney's fees, and the leaker could face similar liability for either invasion of privacy or unlawful disclosure of confidential Now, as I mentioned, there are a couple of exceptions for reporting out. One of the exceptions that comes up frequently, I'll wait for that. It's always good when they don't stop here, right? So, if an action is not yet final, a lot of times a school district is a party to something that requires three or four signatures before it's a done deal, a settlement, for example. And a settlement agreement in litigation, you may need three parties to sign. If you're the first party to approve it, you don't even know if it's actually going to happen. One of the other two parties might reject it, in which case it's meaningless, it didn't happen. So, if you take action in closed session to approve a settlement agreement, but you're not the last party to sign, you don't have to report out. You wait until after everybody's signed it, and then you can report it out. Okay, this is something that I wanted to make sure I talked about, and I'm going to try to get through this quickly because I know I'm running out of your time. How do you deal with limits on durations of a meeting, right? So, you have a bylaw that says you have to be done by 10:30, unless a majority of the board extends the meeting to a specific time. That's your local requirement, that is not a Brown Act requirement, right? The law would let you go until 3:00 in the morning if you wanted to. So, with that in mind, what do you do when you hit 10:30? What if you don't want to keep going? What if everybody wants to go home, right? You can continue the meeting over to the very next day if you want, because you've already published your agenda, you've already told everybody, here's what we're talking about, and presumably those who are interested showed up. So at the meeting, if you run up against that deadline, you can just continue the meeting, you need the board to agree, right? But the board can continue the meeting to the next day, two days hence, or whatever date you all can get together, right? Now, if you do that, a couple things you have to be careful of. You have to be careful of critical legal deadlines. An example, a good example is March 15 deadline for doing a layoff, right? That's a critical deadline, you can't move it. If you have your meeting, say, March 1, right, and you guys run out of time, you can't put the meeting over until March 16 and claim that you satisfied the requirement because it does not relate back to March 1. Whatever action you have to do, you have to do prior to the statutory deadline. So, if you continue a meeting over to a particular day, and if you don't specify the time that the meeting is continued to, the law specifies that it will begin at the time of all your regular meetings, as set in your organizational meeting. If you continue a meeting over to a date that's within five days of the continued meeting, of the adjourned meeting, you don't even have to do a new agenda. If it's more than five days out, you do have to do a new agenda, right? If you have to do a new agenda, if you're going to set it for more than five days out, then you also have to follow the 72-hour posting requirement, not the 24, right? Also, when you do one of these continued meetings over to a new date, within 24 hours, you're supposed to post on or near the door where the meeting took place, so, basically right there, right, that the meeting, that the meeting has been continued and where this continued to, and so forth. That's a reasonable requirement to give you 24 hours because a lot of times these things don't have, the continuation doesn't happen till late at night, and so you may not have staff present, so then the next day during workday, they post a notice. But it is 24 hours, there's no break for weekends, so if you do it on a Friday, someone's going to come in on a Sunday and post it. So, I apologize if we're going three minutes over, but were there any questions from members of the board?
Questions? At this point, I acknowledge that you have my questions, you touched on all of this all.
That's great.
To the point, and we'll go over to, we'll finish.
Yes.
We just want to thank you very much.
No problem.
For being here, going us through, at the same time, reminding us, because it's a rule, what we call it, rule, not a duel in the sense of, but it basically is, you're telling us up to date on what we're about, and in the future we'll be getting, read that document, just talking about the Brown Act.
It's a common problem for school boards because most school boards are staffed by citizen soldiers, not attorneys, and so if you don't have training in how you split these statutes up, you know, so.
That's why you call in ahead of time for the item on the agenda, so that you get some clarity, you show up, you get clarity, plus you can do Q and A as well, it's that.
Well, thank you for your attention, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, at this time, we have the second item, the study session, Mr. Strato.
Thank you, Dr. Lusso, Mr. President, trustees. In this study session, we want to give you an update of our district website progress, and I would tell you that it became apparent to us last spring that, A, we would have some money, in past years we didn't have any money, we were in the starvation mode with the austere budgets that we had, and the deficit of deferred amounts, but it became apparent that our website was outdated and was not user-friendly and didn't meet our needs. After that discussion, we solicited discussion on how we could best proceed, and we moved forward with a consultant to help us develop a new site, and that new site was to be up and totally structured on day one of the school year so that we could then fill in the buckets of information in the different schools and district offices. And I would apologize for the miscommunication or misconception that it would be up and running and you could click anything and go anywhere, but much of the information that had to fill those buckets had to be put together by people who didn't come back to work until we started the school year. At any rate, we wanted it, the website, and we have a new name for it, that I'll let Monica Macias discuss with you, we want it to be user-friendly, informative, and manageable. And with that, I will turn it over to Monica Macias, and she will continue the discussion. Thank you very much.
If you just, it wasn't a moment to connect the people that's here in the podium. Is it good to screen? Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Lusso. I'm Monica Macias, I'm the principal and special assignment for the IT department, and I'm also accompanied by Rosie Mesa, who is a man at tech in our department as well. And I wanted to start with, just to share with you a quote that encompasses some of the ideas and goals that we have, and it's a quote from George Lucas, who is also filmmaker and founder of the George Lucas Educational Foundation. It says, "Today with the power of the internet, we are experiencing a force that is revolutionizing education and offering opportunities to reach and engage diverse learners," which, from his standpoint, like me. "When technology is deployed effectively, it can free up teachers from standing in front of the class presenting information. We can, quote-unquote, flip the classroom with lectures occurring at home via the internet and rigorous project-based learning taking place in cooperative groups at school. In this environment, teachers can be guides and coaches to the students, and what is more powerful in education than a student who is guided by an adult who truly cares, someone who knows their name, who encourages them, and is committed to their success in life?" And so with that goal, and as teachers, we wanted to provide an online learning environment that supports the district staff and students as creators of content, creators of what we have as a digital presence. So to that end, as Jerry said, we began our discussions, and in this timeline, we began back in the area of May with our studies, in our own study sessions, about where we wanted to take our website and that we had outgrown at this point. We took the information to the Board of Trustees, and for information first, and then for action. After that approval, in June, the website development work began, and led by the team of myself, Rosie, and Mr. Sisneros, our website developers, and worked like busybeers all summer, and when it came time for August, when school started, we had all of the, as Jerry said, all of the basic framework, and so it was now up to those staff and departments that had the content that they wanted to put out and be on the public presence. So we conducted trainings. On the 13th of August, the department administrators and their secretary or clerks were trained here in the boardroom, and then on the 21st of August, the site, school site administrators were also trained on their webpage and their webpage presence and doing editing, and it was a back and forth, and it was also a working session. Between the 13th and actually on the 20th, which I don't have here, but on the 20th, there was a follow-up working session for the department administrators, who came together again with some of the work that they had started, and we came together to collaborate so that those with, felt more comfort with the skills of editing their content, helped others that did not have so many, did not feel that comfort level, and so we helped each other to start on a good foot and get content up on their department webpages. And then on the, on the 25th, we have, we come to today, which is what would be our, we consider our debut. And so, with that, let me come over to... So, this is the basic framework, and this is the debut of our district website, and it's at a new URL, a new web address, and that is, I'm actually in editing mode, so it doesn't look like that, sorry. I will, I will say it, and then I'll post it, I have it on my hand up. It is SalinasCityESD. So it is all one word, all run together, SalinasCityESD, and that is the new district URL, the new district website address, and we moved beyond basic website to online learning environment. And so, all of the full-featured richness that is here, I'm going to ask Martine Sisneros, our developer and colleague, to come and talk about this portion, and then I'll come back after he's done, and we'll take a look at a school's website.
Good evening, Mr. President, board, Dr. Lusso, and community. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Martín Ricardo Sisneros, Rosco Jr., repeat? No, should be in the notes somewhere, but my name is Martín Sisneros, and I'm here to, I'm so excited about your, I'm going to say website because I know a lot of you are still saying this is a website, this is not anything else, but the reality, this is something else. This is what we call an OLE, an online learning environment, an online learning, ongoing environment that we have. When people ask, you know, what is the major difference between what we had and what we have now, I always refer people to the SAMR model. If you are brand-new to the SAMR model, SAMR model was developed by Dr. Duven Puente Dura, okay? And in the SAMR model, he talks about how we've been using educational technology since the 1940s in the United States of America. And when we think about how much money we have poured into technology, so you think about the wires, you think about the websites, you think about Chromebooks, iPads, and everything thrown in there, what you see is, well, are we getting a return of investment in the money that we were putting in? And for a lot of the times, the answer is no, until this year. So I'm going to step away from that, and hopefully I'm loud enough to explain this. But when you think about why isn't that technology is not where it should be, it's because it's the way we're using technology. And I want you to really think about this, right? I want you to think about the last gadget that you have. Think about the cell phone that you have, think about your computer that you have. Do you know how to use every single element that's in there?
No.
Right? Pretty much, a lot of us are using it in this category. We're substituting. Most of us, you're like, "Well, Martín, I can go ahead and I can text message, I can read email." Oh, besides your computer? Okay, then you're augmenting. Guess what? If that's how we're using it with our students, if that's how we're using it with our teachers, if that's how we're using it with our community, we're not going to see a change. Where research does show us that there's change is in the modification and redefinition level. Modification means tech allows for significant task redesign. So I'm going to take you through a little classroom task that allows people to get this understanding a little bit better. So think about, back when I was in school, we used to write essays in paper and pencil, right? And then the computer was introduced in the late 80s, and what did we use? Whatever computer was there, was the first thing that we learned how to use, Microsoft Word or some type of word processor. That's substitution. And of course, the late 2000s, in came in Google Docs for Education. A lot of us are now moving into Google Apps for Education, which is great, because now we can share those types of documents with other folks that we couldn't before. Well, at this moment, we're still augmenting, and we need to teach above the line, we need to practice above the line. So when we look at the tools, we're saying, "Well, what are some tools that we can use that will allow us to modify what we're doing?" The modification level is to tech allows us for significant task redesign. What can we do with this technology that we could not do before it existed? That's where we need to be. Those are the type of tools that we need to have. And then the ultimate goal is to have redefinition. When tech allows for the creation of new tasks previously inconceivable, so if the technology did not exist, you cannot do what you can do now. That's what we're reaching for, because anybody can build a website nowadays. I'm a proud parent of a two-year-old, a 12-year-old, a 16-year-old, and an 18-year-old. My 18-year-old is developing apps now. He doesn't need a website. He knows a different way of communicating. So, because that has changed so much, we need a system that will allow us to grow with the digital demands of Common Core, because that's what we're going to teach to. That's now our new environment. So, when we think about this, we need a system that will grow with the digital demands, not only of our students, but our teachers, our staff, our community, and think about all the wonderful programs that we have here in Salinas. So the platform that we decided to bring you upon is Squarespace. I've been building websites since the late 90s, okay? Quick history of myself, I went from being a graphic designer, teacher, administrator, coach, IT person, IT coach, now I work for the Santa Clara County Office of Education, but I've been doing county work for the past 10 years. I work for State Educational Technology Support Systems. I run the technology coordinator group for the state. So I have communications with people who are doing what we're doing across the state, and I also belong to ISTI, the International Society of Technology Education. So this is not just a local thing, this is now a national thing that we're doing here. The reason we went with the platform of Squarespace is we wanted a platform that no matter what type of device that we had in the year 2014, in the year 2018, or the year 2022, we will be able, be able to modify and adapt to it, because five years ago, we were using Accelerated Reader, it was the best thing since sliced bread. Now, we have Google Apps for Education, we're now releasing iPads and Chromebooks, which is great. Five years from now, we're going to be passing out glasses, and watches, and wearable technology, and how are you going to be able to determine which is the best tool to communicate with your students and your families with that? Here's the reason why Squarespace works. Squarespace automatically adapts to whatever new technologies are out there. So if you think about Google, Google updates their site every single time you log on. Squarespace does pretty much the same thing with any new technologies that come out. So if you have a new technology, it's going to work. Oh, you want to edit your online learning environment on your phone? You can. Oh, you have a new tablet? Great, you can do that on that as well. Oh, you have a new Chromebook or laptop, or you have an old? What? Schools have old equipment that they still use? Not a problem, we can still edit our content. There is no installation of any kind in order to be able to edit. So now, we're giving power to our power users, our administrators, our directors, our board, our superintendent, everybody who needs to communicate to our stakeholders, that is what we're doing now. How hard is it? Let me show you. So currently, this is our new URL, SalinasCityESD.org, nice, simple, short and sweet. When you get there, people are going to say, "Well, how do I go in here, and how do I log in?" Special magic key on your computers called the escape button, you click on it, and it automatically transforms and says, "Okay, what's your username and password?" I do not install anything on my computers, ready to roll. I can do this on my phone if you want me to show you, I can do this on my tablet, it doesn't matter. I can do this on my kids' Xbox and PS3 as well. So, at this point in time, I'm going to do, of course, I'm not going to give you the password, but, I'm going to make sure it works, that everybody can just join in. So after your second guess on your password, you're led to the backend. On the backend, you're now able to jump into whichever slide you need to go to, right? So for example, I like this page because there's a group of good-looking people in here, right? And what I like about this, at any point in time, if we need to develop something really quick, if we're saying, "You know what? We are redeveloping our boundaries, let's go ahead and change this up," by a click of a button, I now have the power to add a variety of different components. And remember, Mike said earlier that Squarespace is always adapting to whatever's out there?
No other system at this moment will allow you to add your own.
No other system at this moment will allow you to add your own code. So if you're an app builder, if you're going to HTML5, which is the new coding for the internet. Remember the old days, we used to go to a website and says, "You can't see this because you don't have that plugin." We're never going to have that problem ever again in this place. All of our students, whatever they're using at home, whether it's a tablet, whether it's a phone, whether it's their PS3, they're playing with their Wii at home and playing tennis with their brother and sister, they're going to be able to access all the information that their teachers, their principals, and our school district will provide for them. At any time, we're able to modify this on the fly from any web-enabled device. I'm no longer saying "computer," and you can quote me as of today. I will never say "computer," but because from here on forward, we will now be able to edit, communicate, and participate with our stakeholders from any web-enabled device. Sir, I'm looking at you because I know next year you're going to be wearing Google Glasses and you're going to be able to do this from the comfort of your seat.
I can't wait.
So what I really enjoy about this, and like I said, I've been developing for over a decade, is a lot of the times, we don't know what our users do when they get to our website. And what I like about Squarespace, it automatically tells us how many people are visiting us. We can now analyze which content are they going to, right? And we're going to be able to do this with any piece of content that we have online. What's great about this, we can see how many page views, how many visits, what the audience size was for that particular day. And we can break it down to say, "Okay, were there any mobile devices being used?" Because this is something we have to watch for. The way Squarespace is set up, it doesn't matter whether you're watching this on a 50-inch screen, on a 40-inch screen, all the way down to a 4-inch screen on your phone. The site is set up to automatically detect what you're viewing it from, and it will automatically morph itself in order for the best viewing possible, right? Try that with any other website that you could possibly get into at the moment. So as I scroll down here, I can see if we have subscribers. I can see where, what people are referring to us. I can see a variety of different elements that we could not do before. So backspace really quick. So when I talk about the SAMR model, I want to talk about how we communicate with everyone at the modification and redefinition levels. Because we've been, for a long time, been communicating as a substitution and augmentation model. And you've seen this before, right? How many times have you gone to a website and you're thinking, "Oh, they haven't updated this in the past 12 months"? Because there's usually a few people who had that key in order to edit that particular content. Now we're giving that key to the appropriate people at every department, at every school site, at every person in charge in order to communicate the material and the wonderful things that we're doing here in Salinas City to all of our stakeholders. So I'm going to go back to the regular view level because I want to show you a few things. A lot of the things that went into this website, we worked closely with Stanford, the Design School, or the D-School. And if you have an opportunity to go up there, I would highly recommend because we're now talking about developing learning spaces, not only in schools, for wall-to-wall schools or brick-and-mortar schools, we're also talking about online learning environments. We're talking about blended spaces. Because a lot of you know that when we're looking at our framework at this moment in time, our 21st framework includes a variety of components that we have to adhere to every single time. We think about creativity, you think about curation, you think about critical thinking. There's a lot of elements, as educators, we need to curate and of course send that information off to our stakeholders. So the website is set up to get to most... At this moment, 99.9% of all information are only three clicks away, and we're trying to even eliminate that because that's the best mall at the moment. When you come to the website, at the very top, you see a bar that says "Welcome," about department, staff, parents, community, and schools. This top ribbon will always be there for you to allow yourself to go to any piece of information that you need. Community, we have a variety of different departments. Parents, there's a different portal there. We have a portal for staff. You'll be able to get to any departments from here. The About page, of course, is about what's going on here. But what I like about that is that we went ahead and inserted search bars both at the top of the webpage, and if you scroll all the way down, at the bottom of the webpage. So if people ever need to find any piece of content at any given time, that's going to be there automatically. The second feature that was required from the very get-go is, "Martín, can we have this website in multiple languages?" So my question back was, "How many languages can you speak?" All right? Because the reality is this. If you go out, and I've worked here with the Monterey Language Institute, and they can now pretty much take any civilian and take, I think it's like 13 months in order to make them fully bilingual in any language, right? So my thought was, I heard that, it's like, "Well, how long is it going to take us to do that with our folks, to become, to make them digital literate?" Because the other goal for this online learning environment is to make not only the receivers of information, but also the creators of information, have them to build the passive so they can also become digitally literate. Okay? So when you think about this project, we're hitting this project at many different levels. So we're not just building a website here, folks. We're building a community. We're building an online community, right? Where the learning won't stop at 5 o'clock. Well, the learning won't stop at 8 o'clock in the morning. The learning will continue 24/7, the learning and the teaching. So that's going to be there automatic. We have, of course, a fan that will automatically rotate new information, latest projects that's happening here at district level. Next, you have our blog, and you're usually going to see the first three featured news projects that are happening. In the near future, we will also include social media. We will also include an online video feed so you can see certain events that are happening, the wonderful things that are happening here in the school district. As we continue to scroll down, you see a student portal that will be filled with a variety of different resources connected to each school, whether it's their online program for math, social studies, history, digital textbooks, podcasts, whatever that might mean for the new 21st century curriculum. As we come on down, we have a calendar. We have a link to our schools, the link to most of the staff's mail and apps programs provided by Google Apps for Education. And then we have certain special links, Student Information Assessment, Preschool Williams Act. We have a variety of different ways that people can connect with us. So every department at this point in time will have a Contact Us button that will automatically send that message, particularly to the head of that department. The same will go for all schools, okay? As you scroll down here, this information will automatically be stable. This is the place where people are going to come, and if they have any questions, or they just say, "You know what? Wouldn't it be great if I just get this newsletter every time they send it out?" You can then, of course, add your email address, or folks can add their email addresses there, and then they can get this digitally if they'd like to, okay? So the plan is to provide communication in multiple ways from the multiple departments and programs and schools that we have here in Salinas City, okay? When I go up, and I'm just going to choose one department, I'm going to go to, oh, it's the Educational Services. Because I want you to understand what the layout is. Every time you go to a department, not only will you see the highlighted portions here, but we also see it here as well. So that way, when folks are visiting our site, they can jump into any department they wish to. Once again, all sites will be automatically transitioned, or translated, I should say, to any language that they like to. So any text that's on there will automatically be translated. Now, the first thing I want to say about this, this is powered by Google, right? And I get this all the time. "Well, Martín, is this going to be 100%, right?" And like, if you go and you purchase Rosetta Stone, you go out and you purchase Dragon Dictation, you go out and purchase any other app that will cost you about $2,000 or $4,000, guess what? They're going to do the job just like Google, probably even less. Because Google, with the power of Google, Google has the world working for them. In the next iteration of Google, we'll be able to upload video, and it'll be automatically translated to whatever language you want as well, without the use of any other piece of software. So when we talk about automation, about, you know, "Does it matter what language you speak?", the answer is going to be no. What we're really going to have to focus on is, how do we teach our parents, our community, our students, and our teachers how to search like a digital journalist? And that's really going to be a big portion of our focus of how to do that. But as far as for the site, we're going to be ready for them. Doesn't matter what we throw out at them. So in here, of course, we're going to provide links to most of the resources that every program has provided. Most departments will also have their own blog because we're now living at a time that if we don't tell, if we do not tell our own story, somebody else will. So who best to tell your own story than yourself? So most of the major departments will also have a blog in which they will produce their content and of course, speak about their latest and greatest project that they're working on. As we scroll down, you're also going to have a link to their calendar for that specifically department or program. You're also going to have links to important documents that they have. And of course, as you keep on scrolling down, if there's anybody you're looking for, you will see their information at the bottom. Everybody's able to see Contact Ed Services. Every department will have that in which, say, for example, we understand that many people in our community do not have emails or are not there yet with their technology proficiency. So what we've done is, we've taken a form and we sent it out. So no matter who in the community needs to send a piece of information, they'll be able to put their information there, send it, and it'll automatically get to the department head at that point in time. So there is no more wait of, "Oh, should we call somebody? Is there a different way?" Well, now you'll have the choice, whether you want to call by phone, you want to come and visit, or you want to go ahead and send a digital message without having to have an email of your own. All right. So remember how you said earlier that we are providing an online learning environment? Well, one thing I do want to show you, I'm going to go back to editing mode here. We have developed a method in which it doesn't matter, you know, if our HR person goes over to assessment or assessment comes over, everything's set in place. It's set up like a machine, right? If you are head of a certain department, you want to come over to another department, the files won't leave with their email. The files won't go anywhere else. It would always be a part of Salinas City. So there will always be an account where that information is at any given time. What's nice about this is, once again, if your administrators or admin assistants want to use a particular device, and you want to use a different device, it's really not going to matter. The question is going to be, can you get to the internet with whatever device that, you know, it is that you're using? So I'm not going to go too much on this, but Squarespace is set up to pretty much project in any piece of technology you can monitor. So in a month, if you decide to go get the Apple Watch, guess what? You'll be able to edit your new website through your Apple Watch. Or if you go and grab your new Google Glasses, you'll be able to do that too. Or if you're like my wife and want to buy a refrigerator with a monitor already built in, we'll be able to edit our website from our refrigerator as we drink early coffee. But anyways, those are some of the key elements. And one thing I do want to mention as well is, this is a project that is... How do I say? This is a living project. This is not something we're going to build and say, "Okay, we're done, and we're going to move on." Because what we're embedding here, we're embedding this with our online suite of Google Apps for Education. And if you haven't learned about Google Apps for Education, that is the digital suite that we are now using in order to communicate, in order to collaborate, in order to connect, in order to provide a lot of the digital tools for any of our students and staff. So when you think about that is, you have to realize that no matter what we throw at Squarespace, no matter what we throw at Google, we'll always have a platform for us to use.
Yes? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I want to know if a board member's got any questions.
Why don't we redirect from our old DOS website? Can we just get a thing that automatically redirects to our...
We're finishing out the online space that we already have and being able to put in place the redirect. So even if someone's touched the old address, they will be redirected here. Yeah, there won't be any additional steps. It will just automatically come over.
Sorry?
I have a couple of questions. One is about the timeline. When is each department going to have all the input on the timelines? What about teacher training? When will that happen? How does that happen? And students, how do students learn how to use this?
So the departments, after the first initial training for departments and the workgroup session, Jerry, you had a deadline for the 22nd, I believe it was. And that would be the very first initial content to be in place. And so, but also because that's their first viewing, their first installment, they're not finished. And we will continue to be able to have, you know, similar workgroup sessions to be able to help people along with moving their content and getting it online, their documents, any of the content that they want to post and publish to the community and/or to students as well.
And I want to add to that. A huge part of the building of this site is the way we're going to manage documents from here on forward. Previously, we would have Microsoft Word. We would have Pages or other type of software system you had to install into a computer. And then, of course, you all understood what that meant, right? If you downloaded a document that wasn't formatted to your computer, it would say you have the wrong version. You have the... Well, we've done away with that. So what we're doing now is we're moving everything from Microsoft Office, Apple's Pages, or any other third-party suite system, moving that over to online documents using Google Asks for Education, turning those into online documents, meaning that you can then view, download the information in whatever type of device that you have. So that's the other part of the training that at the beginning, we didn't state, but now that we're realizing, "Well, why are we just going to do, why are we just doing the SAMR model first out?" No, no, no. If we're going to make this move, let's transition everybody so everybody can become digitally proficient. So from here on forward, our eyes on the prize is to become a paperless district later down the line. And this is the first step.
And the students, are the students, the teachers will be teaching the students how to access it?
Well, we got to get the teachers there first. And let me just show you some steps that we've already taken to make that happen.
Well, Monica gets that set up. Let me just make a comment too. We realized that the first iteration for the departments that came in,